It's like 6:01. I call a meeting to order, January 25th. Is there any agenda additions or deletions?
I believe I can make a motion to delete Representative Art Peterson.
Yep. There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to pose? That's good. I just got a letter here from Ann Southard that I want to bring up. It's about naming. I just, yeah, I just want to add that to new business. Or it could be old business, I guess.
What's it in regard to?
Naming of the airport.
Oh, that is old business. So I'll make a motion that we add naming the airport to old business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You whole time clearing the head, so go ahead, Bob. Is there any other additions or deletions? Alright, hearing none, I would entertain a motion with regard to the January 11th minutes for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve them subject to any corrections or deletions.
Second.
Alright, has anyone seen any corrections or deletions needed?
I thought they looked red myself.
But any objection? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just note that I wasn't here for that meeting, so I will abstain from that.
Did you get that, Katie?
Could I see that letter out of curiosity? The one that you were passing? Oh, when it comes back, can I see it?
Yep.
Just so I'm prepared for the discussion.
Yep, go ahead.
Just a note on that young man that we had the thing for there. Greg Washburn, who's house burned in West Stratland.
Yeah.
We had a benefit for him. Came out extremely well. And he's very pleased and...
That's the one why you were...
That's why I had to skip last meeting because we were doing a 50/50 year deal.
Okay.
Came out very well.
Sound like good turnout?
The dinner was a great turnout. They had a dinner in West Stratland for him. And I think they sold over 200 dinners. They just kept coming and going and going. And we collected four or 500 at the 50/50. And one other night, the next night I was at that one too. Well, the one I was at, they collected, I forgot how much he told me for that one. The Sunday night we had one and Monday night was the one I missed, but the people just kept coming up and giving them money. It was good, really good.
Alright, highway. What do you got for us here?
We have an access, driveway access permit to...
Want to read it?
Approve. This is for Tim Page. He would like to gain access on East Street. It's just south of the bump road. That's actually across the road from Old Orchard Drive. Brian Johnson's right straight across. And the site visit that I did does not require any culvert. And I see no reason why not, why to decline it. So I support the board, or ask the board permission to approve this driveway as it's needed without a culvert needed.
Alright, I have that brief report. Is there anybody who want to make a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Again.
That's right on the top of the little mole.
Right on top of the mole, actually. It's like a, look like a logging yard at one time, a little spot.
Right.
Right across from Old Orchard's.
That's just south of Lynn.
Yes.
Yeah. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, who has to sign that?
Earth right there in the bottom.
And want to just add to that motion that have the...
Select Board.
Chair sign it?
Yeah, that's good with me.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else, Cash?
Katie and I just started working on weight limit posting, which we're gonna have to get some more resources and do some more discussion on it before we present it to the board to have a more foundation of what we're... Where we want to be at and how we're gonna get there. There's a possibility of just maybe posting the Class 3 roads, which are dirt roads. That was one of the suggestions, so stay tuned for further updates on that, I guess, for next meeting, I hope.
Just as a side note, I did see in an email from a source, I want to say it was either the end of last week or the beginning of this, it might have even been today. My day, Monday's running all over the place for me today, but it was a report that the Transportation Fund did better than expected revenue-wise for the state. And that the dire predictions of what they thought it was gonna be did not materialize. So it didn't go into any greater depth, but they were talking specifically, the reason I saw it is because they were talking about transportation and they were also talking about the Ed Fund. So the Ed Fund and the Transportation Fund did not, for the state, according to the report I saw, did not do as badly as they forecast, so I would hope, hope that that would mean you would see grants this summer. But I don't know.
If we are, if we do, we're ready to go with what we had last year already prepared.
So, I mean, let's hope that that's what happens.
That's all I have.
Just one quick little thing, you've probably already taken care of it. Over on the quick road, just south of the Grimworts Farm, going south in the wheel track.
Yeah, there's one there, there's a pothole there. We also got potholes just above Reynolds on Culver Road that we need to address. And, oh, there's another one somewheres. And actually, they're getting pretty aggressive, but with this freezing weather, it's not anything we can do at this time right now.
Plus, we're gonna get some snow probably tomorrow.
So you get a warm day.
Yeah. And they are bad, them potholes. On Culver Road, there's like four of them right together, stacked together, where the, I believe, Valco Transfer Station is, I think it is. And then, like Bob said, over by Grimworts's. Yeah.
I happened to have one yesterday myself.
They missed it so far.
Actually, I had a call from a town resident today, coming out of the industrial park. And actually, I know where the pothole is, and that's actually Route 7B, which is a state.
State's.
And so I need to get hold of Brad Keith on that.
But you're gonna keep an eye on it and when you can, put some blacktop in?
Yep, oh yeah. As soon as the weather permits, we'll get blacktop into them holes, definitely.
Is there any temporary fix, like dump some gravel in them?
Some sure pack or something like that?
It could, but how long will it stay? Unless, maybe a little bit of sure pack, maybe it'd freeze in there.
Yeah.
For the time being, we could actually try something like that if we wanted to, just to... It'd be a temporary one-week fix or five-day fix or...
Well, at least that we, the residents in town know that we're aware of it.
Something's happening.
Yeah. So if you can, it'd be good, Cash. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions? Anybody? Okay. Moving right along. Warrants are right here. Who hasn't signed them yet?
Those are the payables, but, or, excuse me, those are the time cards, but payables? Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't seen the payables yet. Okay.
I had a question for the treasurer on that, but that's okay. I can ask her tomorrow.
Okay.
We had one guest, Art was gonna stop in and discuss H48, which was, at that time, was proposed bill to let towns make a decision on when they, and when and how they wanted to hold the March meeting. But now it's stated law and Leagues, I think I forwarded to you guys. Leagues said that, you know, it's a law now and everything, and it's up to the towns. After talking with Gloria, we want to move ahead, and I think the Select Board, I need your opinions on this. Just move ahead like we do every year. So, I mean, we just went through a whole big presidential thing and it seemed to work alright, so nobody has any concerns, right?
Well, move ahead, but the informational meeting, my understanding is gonna be on computer.
Zoom.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
With open town hall voting?
Correct. Town Hall will be open for voting. I guess the question becomes, the only question I had, is are we gonna be present here like this to run the informational meeting?
As far as location?
What location are we gonna use to run the informational meeting?
Using Zoom, I'd say, right here.
Because, because the reality is, the town officers really are gonna have to be present. Like if there's a question for the treasurer, if there's a question for us, like there's gonna have to be ability to answer...
For the Lester's and stuff like that.
We'll have to...
Yes, see, that's the contradiction is, we usually set it up at 1 o'clock prior to our town meeting that night, which is up at the...
Correct, but you're gonna have to have a location for the information.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest.
As long as they've got Wi-Fi.
Well, why don't we check into that, Katie?
If they do. The hall over here at church?
That's true too.
That's got Wi-Fi.
As long as it's a location with Wi-Fi and we can all spread out and be together so that we can answer any questions that might come across.
We can set a table up there in no time.
Let's...
Yeah, I would suggest either maybe the church hall or...
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do the Grange Hall first. If they don't have the Wi-Fi set up, then we'll pass that over to you, Rick.
No problem.
Set some timing up for us. Alright, Katie? So let's get that all figured out so that when we put out information, you know, ahead of time, we won't have six people calling saying, "I never heard that." So... Alright, soon as we get a plan, we'll get it out there. Under old business, we had a discussion at some point here at the Town Hall regarding naming the building over at the airport.
That letter did not make it to me, by the way.
Right, we're gonna...
So, yeah, Ann Southard brought that off today.
Yes.
And she had also submitted that letter when I submitted our Select Board letter. So she did send that to the tack board.
She sent a copy of that as well, what she sent. And basically, what it is, given that we just got this and we haven't really weighed in, I think the thing is to make some copies for us. We'll look it over and we'll have a formal discussion on it at our next meeting.
Good with that.
Is that alright with you guys? That way we can, you know, get, if needed, any other information, stuff like this.
My question is, what's their timeframe on deciding naming that terminal?
There's actually, it's an ongoing discussion with that other group from the airport and the regional folks. So I may suggest that we get a copy of this to Chris.
I believe she mailed to Chris, right? The airport manager?
This letter?
Yeah.
From Ann?
Yes.
I have, I don't know, I haven't read it yet either.
Hi, this is Ashley from Visa Master Account Services, calling you in regards to your credit card account.
There.
No problem, it's overdrawn.
No problem, I don't use it.
I hate when they won't bother you.
Were you here, Cash, when Ann was here?
I was, but I didn't get any discussion with her about any of it, because I didn't realize what she was here for.
I don't think, if she sent it to the tack board, I don't think she sent it to Chris, because he's not on that same board.
Right, but it's important that he get a copy of that, so if you could get it on your computer and email it to him just so that we can make him aware of it, and then he'll let other members of that committee know. And, you know, I'm sure you'll get some interest with Joe, Gene Cola.
Keep everyone in the loop, is what you're saying.
Bless you, use me. I hate these masks. Let's see. So, under new business, we have a request for a cemetery plot.
So a lady dropped off that letter a couple weeks ago, and she's gonna be cremated when she dies, and she'd like a spot in, like, the Chip and Hook Cemetery, which, from my understanding, there's not any room, or we're unaware of any room left over. But she insisted that she only needs a small spot, so she wrote a letter to the board to ask.
Mr. Kevins, this is first of my knowledge of this, so I'd like, I think we had to have a copy of that just to figure out what we have for space and go from there.
I mean, so my understanding is this, to our knowledge, this individual does not have, like, health issues that were under time constraints on this.
No, I think she was just getting, like, her will in order.
So what I would make a motion for tonight is that we respond to the individual, that the Select Board have taken her letter under consideration, and that we're gonna be, we're gonna research and come to a decision, and I think I would put a timeframe on it, like, maybe by the end of the month of March, and we'll issue a decision to her at the end of March.
Is there a second to that?
Buy us some time to do some research.
I'll second it.
Alright, Cash seconds it. Before I ask for a vote, I think that one of the other things we want to do is certainly pass this on to Cemetery.
Cindy and...
Cindy and Heidi. And can you make copies of this for us? Either here or via email, and then one copy for Bob.
You want copies for each of you?
Yes.
That way we don't have to... I'm gonna put that back in the...
Let's do that in just a second.
Now, my understanding, based on the maps, Katie, though, when it was initially looked at, there was potentially one or two plots on the east, well, the eastern side of the set-in against the back of McCormick's pasture, kind of McCormick's Pastures right there. It's kind of where there actually was a burial last summer. Kind of over the bank there.
I think there's an opening to that.
I thought we had determined there might be one plot left there, but I don't know if we know that for sure.
I have just like a scanned copy of the map.
Okay.
Which I thought maybe these X's were the...
Were the ones that might still be open?
Might be available, but she thought they were on a bank as well.
They are, but...
See, I thought after the last burial, we, with the help of Cindy, looking through the books and stuff like this, that we decided that there was no plot area up there left.
No, I agree. What we're wondering is there are three plots on here. Plot 37, 38, and 39, I think? No, take that back. Thirty, it's 31, 30... Trying to read it. 31, 32, and 33 have X's in them. And they're, they're right here. There's three of them.
That's on that hill.
It's kind of on that, however, not to say too much, but like for, say, a burial of an urn or something like that, it's probably within reason, it's probably possible. But the question is, and now, these maps are 100 and however many years old, do the, what we need to find out, and probably, truthfully, Linda's the one to ask, because she would have been here and sold these last plots that were available to find out if the reason those were sold were Xed out, were they Xed out because they were considered unsuitable for sale? Or are they technically a part of one of the plots in front of them? Because, you know, is it, but I would have thought that they would have labeled them contiguous, you know, that they would have all been together. But again, I think we need to do our homework. And that's why I'm saying, make a decision by the end of March. And, you know, that gives us at least a month and a half to research this. I think Linda needs to be called, I think, you know, the people who have the knowledge.
Linda Trombley we were referring to.
Correct.
Would the X mean that they were used?
I don't think they were used. I think that you would see them with names on them if they'd been used.
I thought that they had taken them out because they were of the landscape of it all.
Well, I don't know, I mean, there's other plots out front and on the inside of the horseshoe here that are also blank, like, that they might even be available. So, you know, the question is, is it really full? Is it really all sold? If it's not, we need to do some homework.
Update that thing.
I don't know if I recall, I'm like, thinking about it. You just mentioned, on one side of the cemetery, and I think that's why Robert's talking, I'm not sure. There was discussion regarding it being over the bank so much that it wouldn't be an ideal burial.
Actually, in that back corner where you're talking, it kind of levels out a little bit. And where they just had a recent burial there was a steep part.
Correct. And they, you had, some dirt had to be brought in, I believe, for that burial.
We had a lot of brush here to move.
But if the brush and stuff was under control, where we're talking on those empty ones, personally, I would think, again, just my personal opinion, if you've got somebody who's just gotten earned, you know, we're not talking a full casket, I think that you might possibly be able to do that.
Sell the plot, yeah.
Alright, so I think the best answer is, as you point out, is to, we have to do some research, but it has temporarily been determined that there is no plots open. However...
We're gonna research it.
We want to research it and go...
Yep, and basically dig through it and we'll get back to our March. By the, by...
By the end of March.
By the end of March.
Okay, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have that right, Katie? Alright. Now, a formal statement, I want to, we had a brief discussion on this with, we were talking about Art. I would like to have a motion with regard to us keeping things normal relative to the March election. Does anyone want to consider that?
With regards to, what are you looking for?
Where are we gonna be?
Yeah, what's our plan for having the, well, first of all, do we want to have maybe not an open meeting the night before and then voting here at the Town Hall as usual?
Well, I thought we just determined that we were doing a Zoom meeting.
Zoom meeting.
Right, but I want to have a motion so that it's, there's, in the law, it's whatever the town decides, so we have to get that on the books so that we can pass that information to the town clerk.
So it's just that you're keeping the meeting over Zoom and then you're doing in-person voting unless absentee requests, like formally?
Make that a motion, Katie.
Zoom at the library, isn't it? Zoom, uh...
Grange.
Yeah, at the Grange.
So did you just make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So your motion then is Zoom the night before, in-person voting here, and absentee ballots can be requested?
Yep.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So let's make that, I will also vote in favor. So that...
I seconded it.
Rob did, so now it's unanimous vote through the whole board.
So Zoom on the night before. Town Hall will be open, and of course, they can request absentee ballots.
We need to really stress the time of voting for Town Hall.
Ten to...
Ten to seven.
Which, that's not set by us, that'll be set by the ACA, but yes.
That needs to be really...
That is understood when you say "as usual." But then, to your point, though, Cash, there were a couple of characters came in here that did not understand that, so... That's a good point. Approval of the 2021 election warning, and we all have to sign it.
Denver.
Is there a motion?
Can I see it? I haven't even seen it.
This? I already signed it, so... Don't laugh too loud. Kelly, I did not see this until just now.
I just, I just left it this afternoon.
Okay, so we'll have to add to the agenda real quick so that you can speak to it.
I figure I'd do it in the officer's report.
That's where I thought you would.
Sounds good.
That was Heidi's idea.
Yep, I'm good.
Alright, want to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the town warning.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob's just reviewing it, so we're gonna hold up on the call for the vote.
I think all paperwork was due in today, right, by 5?
By, oh yeah, yes.
Yeah, then Gloria stay here.
Oh, for...
For officers and all that, I think, for positions, I should say.
Oh, I see.
Today was deadline.
I believe today was the deadline. Today at 5 o'clock.
Yeah, good to me.
Okay, so I'll call a motion again. All in favor of the motion made by Rob?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We all have to sign it, so pass out the cash and get right around the...
Sorry about that, Cash.
Now, let's go to the...
Officer's report.
Right, Officer's report. Kelly, do you have a report for us?
I do today. I've been trying to clean up some of our old accounts. I was able to get some mobile homes abated last month. And our oldest one we have is the Morton property. It's parcel M82300. It is located on Locker Mountain. It's a piece of property that we have fifteen years of back taxes on our books right now. It's about sixteen thousand dollars in taxes, an acre of land. We don't know where the property owners are. There's really no tax, so I can't do a tax sale on it legally because I can't notify property owners. So I reached out to Bill Blumer, and his suggestion is for the town to publish and post a notice that the town will provide a quick clean deed in exchange for a payment or a partial payment. I do not think we're gonna get full payment on the taxes as the property is not worth sixteen thousand dollars. An acre of property in Clarence in that area goes anywhere from forty-five hundred to six thousand. So I think that's probably all we're really gonna get for it, is something in that area. The deed would not transfer clear title, there would be some, they call adverse action on it. It's not cleaned for about fifteen years, I believe. Bill Blumer suggested that we would, we have to publish in the paper and put notice in three different locations and pretty much put it up to bid for anybody interested. He said the best bet is for somebody, an adjoining property owner, then they could just kind of exercise, they can just kind of absorb it after so many times, so long. The, this parcel is bordered on three sides by Casella Associates and one side by actual Walker Mountain owners. I've had a kind of brief, informal discussion with Casella Associates about if it's anything they would be interested in. I know they'll probably put on a bid for it. So I just need your guys' authorization to move forward with the process so we can start to get rid of this property that is sitting on our books and we're getting nothing for it.
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion?
We've just had, you know, we've been following this right on the half of the time, we've done something.
All right. So there's been a motion made, seconded by Rick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so unanimous.
And Bill Blumer gave me a notice of intent to sell. I did have Heidi's contact information on it, coming back to Heidi instead of me because I don't want any conflicts if Casella Associates does decide to bid.
Well, you're, you're all set with that too, right? Heidi's all set with that, I assume. Okay, good job. And I think we want to keep this on file, this information.
Yep, I have a copy.
Oh, okay. Is there anything else?
No, um, we have the twenty-twenty-one taxes are down to under a hundred thousand, so this year right now.
That's good, good job.
Total is under three hundred, it's like three forty-five total to win at the end of the year.
Has there been anyone that's given the town a hard time with this, or? Because I noticed we haven't had any BCA hearings or anything, so.
Um, there was a BCA last month.
Yeah.
That had a couple of people, but the majority of that was mobile, cleaning up the mobile homes.
Yep.
And I think we have another one that's abandoned as well.
It's also my understanding that one that's been a chronic problem over the years, as of last week, likely won't be a problem.
Yep. It's paid off all of that three years, it pays off.
When we had that meeting last month, I remember some conversation briefly about the property that's over on Co River Road. Yes. Has anything, have you contacted anybody, or have you heard anything?
That one, we, the listers, I believe, put the property value to zero, so there will be taxes on it going forward and we have dated what was out there.
Good. I just wanted to get that on.
Doesn't feel like it's usable.
It'd be nice to unload it, though.
It would.
Again.
You're not kidding. But.
Can we, are we gonna at least research and find out if she's still alive?
Uh, we could.
I mean.
The, they kept saying she was in Florida. And then, what was the other, Florida or over in New Hampshire? Something, I don't. But the thing is, when we consider having somebody, if the town took it over, the problem is, the shingles are all asbestos.
And the bank is in the way, so I don't even know if there's a spot you could put something.
Yeah.
It's a perfect scenario of, you know, the state is big on these river accesses. It's a perfect scenario to, I think I mentioned that at the meeting, to approach them and you do some sort of, you know, they even have deals where they send in groups to clean stuff like that, you know, I would think they would work to get it cleaned up, you know, I mean, they're huge on green space.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just think that.
Good parking spot for fishermen, maybe?
Well, I mean, I just think that the reality is, or if it was cleaned up, you know, again, that's another scenario of if it was cleaned up, is there an adjoining landowner that wants to pick it up?
Discussion for later.
It'd be worth asking the question.
Yeah.
I mean, to me.
It don't cost.
And then it goes back on the rolls, even if it's just empty land. At least it goes back on the rolls and it doesn't sit there at zero forever. Because right now, if it goes to zero and abated, it's gonna be that way through my lifetime and my kid's lifetime. I mean, it's never gonna.
Never gonna change.
It's never gonna change.
Not one bit. But you know, I was by there today, and I'm not, I'm not sure, but it looked to me like somebody had put, maybe the town done it, I don't think so, a new no trespassing sign or something.
Oh, really?
Yes, yeah, it's a red, red.
Yeah.
Red sign. I stopped there and looked around down behind it. And, because when we went over to look at that driveway, it kept bugging me, bugging me, so I said I was to stop over there. That, I can't believe the river didn't pull it in. Yeah. So, that would be a great first step with the state to say, "That's gonna pollute your river."
They don't care.
They don't care.
Yeah.
How long did the car sit in Proctor?
Yeah.
Until today?
One year.
More than that.
One year.
They say it was a year in the paper, didn't they?
They just pulled it today.
Oh, God. Katie, do you have anything for us?
Um, I had just included another draft of the selectman's report. It's updated, took that CMB policy paragraph out and also edited, just that, instead of, you didn't, like, cut or level fund the budget, because it's increased a little bit. That's all I have.
Well, this Ann Sutter thing, we want to make sure that we get back to her and send a copy to Chris.
What, do you want me to respond to her?
This.
That you've received it?
Yes, that we received it and we had a brief discussion. And because she's already sent information to the other group, we will send something over to the airport to Chris so that he will also take this up in defense of this other individual's family who wanted to name that person who never even lived here for any length of time.
Which I believe that got shot down, didn't it?
I'm not sure. I haven't heard, I haven't talked to Chris. What is this about here?
Um, that's just, I received that in the mail today along with that magazine. Well, it's more like a guide for leadership, so just something for you to glance over if you're interested.
Well, we can leave it here. This reading. It's good reading.
I haven't looked at it yet, I will.
Okay. Do you have anything that you're concerned?
I do not tonight, no.
Rick?
I'm good.
Finally. Just like to say, after our last meeting with the sheriff's department, I see they have stepped up and they're doing pretty well around the village.
Yep.
Seen them walk on Mountain Road now, too, quite a bit, so that's good. Do you have anything, Cash?
Yeah, I got a little bit with snow plowing on the roads and stuff. We've had a few light issues with vehicles parked on the road, but we're also having quite a bit of other issues with the garbage cans, the plastic containers setting too close to the road. When the plows go by, I, you know, if they nick them or something, might end up garbage scattered all over, not being on purpose, but they seem to be too close to the right way of the road. If people, appreciate if people could actually set their garbage containers back in the driveway a little bit more so we don't hit them and disperse garbage all over.
Maybe it would be a good thing to put that on the town site as a, as a road crew concern.
I don't think you're putting anything on the site until we get a new one.
Uh, well, maybe we can.
When it comes up.
We could post it someplace.
By me. That's all I have.
Well, how's the plowing across the road? Still bad? People corrupt?
Depends on where it is, based on what I've seen driving around.
It depends on where it is, but you gotta understand with all the snow we had there back Christmas time.
That part I understand.
Yeah, you know. There's been a few, that was another thing, few people that actually, I did personal calls to them, asked them to clean up a little bit more. What they do is pushing across the road, but they're leaving a tail out in the road, it freezes that a little bit.
Yeah, so it's a lump.
And it raises havoc on the plows.
Me, I try to not do that, I just push it to the end of my driveway, then go out in the road and then push it off to the side.
Really?
You're the one.
I thought I saw it across the road, but that's all right.
You're the one. When I plow around the mailbox, I push it in there. I haven't gone across the road since.
You let me the last time.
That's right. That's all I have.
All right, now make the motion.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Good.